Well, it'll be after hurricane.
Yeah, no lie there.
Those are cheaper.
Hi Brett, how are you sir?
Good.
Alright, thank you.
Hi Rick.
Better than the shoes.
Seems like your book's a lot thicker than mine.
Well, I think it's 198.
Oh, I got, I got things. Wait a minute.
199, 198.
Let's call this meeting to order. Eric?
Thank you sir, good evening. This is the second of two scheduled budget work sessions. And our hope would be at the conclusion of tonight's meeting that any changes that you would be interested in seeing in the budget that's going to be in front of you for formal action on Tuesday, September 19th, you would indicate to us so that we can then incorporate those into the final budget that you'll have, the budget ordinance that you'll have in front of you. So far, you've only, we've only talked about one change that we would be making to the budget that was originally proposed to you. That was in the transportation fund where we had overestimated the expenditures in the amount that we would pay the Kansas City area transportation authority for bus service. So we would intend to reduce that by $36,000, the amount that we had, we'd overestimated that one. But other than that, as of tonight, you haven't any, indicated any changes you'd like to see us make. So that would be my hope for the, by the end of the work session. Tonight's focus, as we've spoken about, would be, tend to be on capital projects, although we're prepared to talk about anything that's in the budget that you might be interested in. And our thought was tonight that rather than go through each and every project that's listed, and we're going to focus on the narrative section of the budget that begins on page 199, which includes all the different capital projects and all the different funds. But rather than go through every single one of them, we thought we would try to focus primarily in terms of our presentation on the ones that we think are new or particularly a large expenditure, expenditures which are, tend to be recurring in nature or which seem to be self-explanatory, we thought we would probably not necessarily make a presentation on. Just rely on you to have had a chance to look at it. And maybe, you know, if you like, you could pause at the end of each section and just make sure that you don't have any questions about anything that we don't actually touch on. That's just an interest of trying to control time. But we're prepared to discuss anything at all that's in the, in the budget tonight, particularly in the capital section. One new feature that I would just note with regard to capital projects this year, it's in the very, very back of your budget document. One is a five-year outlook in the gaming fund. And then we also have a five-year outlook in the convention and tourism fund. Convention and tourism funds, both some operational items and some capital items. But because of the nature of it, thought it would be worthwhile to have that. Gaming fund is primarily, although not entirely, capital projects. And again, just to try to provide a little bit of context for this year's proposed projects in the overall context of how the fund balance is looking after five years. We are proposing to spend a lot of money in 2018, draw down the gaming fund considerably due to, you know, some, one particular large project in particular. So we are happy as such to answer any questions about that. So with that, I'll go ahead and call on Parks and Recreation Director Kelly Batipka. There are a couple of items in the convention and tourism fund that involve Parks and Recreation projects that I think Kelly would like to touch on. And then she can also talk about the capital projects which are in the Parks and Recreation Fund, but which are discussed in the capital narrative. Kelly?
Thank you Eric. Good evening Mayor Stilo, council members. For the upcoming events for 2018, we're looking at an increase to the mayor's tree lighting due to last year, we, with all the lights on the tree and the light displayed, we blew a few, so we're...
What page you on, or?
Oh, 137. So with that, we're looking at an additional increase of $2,500 to have some electrical services outlets run out there to eliminate us having issues with power outages, not just at the event, but the lights went out a couple times, so that would, this additional cost would help us get to having that ability and also to grow the light display there at the mayor's tree, which would run for 30 to 40 days. We've had a deduction on our Friday night concert series. It was for $5,000. We've gotten some great bands at some wonderful prices. And we've had some sound equipment and light companies that we work with now that are a better price than what we originally had in the beginning of putting this program on. So we were able to reduce the cost of $5,000. And then on the next page, Arts in the Park Festival, which we held this year, we would like to ask for a $5,000 increase in that program for marketing. That was one of the things we heard lacked in that event this year was marketing. And a lot of people didn't hear about that. So we're looking at wanting to do a street banner, signs on the corners of the parks that direct individuals to where they need to go. So that would be the request for the additional $5,000 for the Arts in the Park. Are there any questions? Okay. Alright, so I'm now on page 98. For capital outlay for Parks and Recreation Board. We're looking at, we've gone into, it's brief, brief knowledge here, is we've gone into master plan with the school district and that we're looking at bringing to you for education here in the next couple of months. But our ball fields that the school districts use and we use quite frequently for our youth and adult athletics, I really need some maintenance. We need to look at getting some field dirt to build the field ups to a proper elevation play and also add some drying mix that helps when we have rainy days to dry out the fields quicker. So we've kind of budgeted $25,000 to hopefully tackle one, if not two, fields for that this upcoming year. We have $15,000 for furniture, which we had, there was not enough funds in the budget for the new Parks and Recreation Center to purchase all the furniture necessary for the new facility. So the board approved to move forward with spending $15,000 to purchase office furniture and lobby furniture for the new facility. And then landscape was not budgeted in the new facility. And so the board looks at $8,000 to build landscape or at least start the landscaping process of the new facility. So at least the front entrance way and then work our way around as the budget allows.
When we, did you have some tables and chairs and stuff like that that you?
Yes, we'll be, we'll be using the existing tables and chairs, but we'll need to also purchase more tables and chairs. But we do have funds that were allotted from this year that we'll be using to purchase additional, but yes.
On this, on this, for the capital outlay, is that coming out of the Parks Fund? Or is that coming out of gaming? Do we know?
That's coming out of the fund balance of the Parks and Recreation.
It's coming out of Parks, the Parks and Recreation Fund.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I just want to know, does ball field maintenance and mainly the master plan, is that the deal the school wanted to help upgrade Diamond One?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we're not 100% at that point yet, but some work needs to be done. So we weren't sure, you know, which would be coming first, but we wanted to get some monies available to start that.
Are they still thinking about having a grass infield?
Well, no, turf. I'm sorry, for Diamond One, it would be turf.
Turf, okay.
Turf, yes.
Yeah. I strongly support that ballpark one upgrade. As you know, we used to, back when I was still umpiring that stuff down there, we used to draw in, what's that big league?
In KCA.
Ben Johnson.
Ben Johnson. Yeah, we still, they still come down.
Some of them. I mean, Diamond One, it used to be really a cool play back when they had the old bleachers and everything. But that's past, but I, yeah, I'd like to see that upgraded. And plus, it's a home field for the high school.
Yes, well, we hope to bring that to council here in the next couple of months to start that conversation.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor. Kelly, has the drone people, are they going to come back?
They, I did follow up with them after their event in July, and they are eager to come back, but we don't have anything set in stone yet.
Okay, they really, they really think that North Town is a keen place to be. And they really, because I went down there when they had their last run and talked to them and introduced myself to them, and they said they just love North Town and the facility down here. So I was hoping that maybe they would continue to, you know, I don't know what they pay, what we charged them to do all of that, but apparently it's pretty reasonable.
Yes. So they kind of, right now, they're seen to be traveling all over the metro, but they did enjoy their time here and wish to come back next year.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions about Parks and Recreation capital or programming?
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, well, with that then, we would tend to begin, if you want to follow along, on page 199 of your budget document. This is the narrative section regarding capital and gaming fund projects. And I will, we'll just begin with the first project listed. Now, the general fund, fund does fund some capital projects, typically ones which are under $10,000. It's just a definition that we use. So if it's under $10,000, we don't put it in the gaming fund, we put it out of the general fund. There is one exception to that $10,000 rule, and that's the expansion equivalent of equipment item for the police department, which Chief Beamer will talk about. That's, has to do with the way that we marketed the public safety sales tax when we were explaining it to voters. So I'll let Chief, you touched on it last, last meeting, but we'll touch on it again. So I'll go ahead. Pat, would you talk about the first project listed in the general fund under buildings and grounds?
Yes, sir. The garage door movement sensors are to install motion sensors on the garage doors at the Buildings and Ground Shop. Right now, they have none. There have been a couple occurrences where they shut on a truck, but we don't want to be, have anybody injured or damage any vehicles.
Has it never had it before?
No.
I'm surprised.
I am too.
Gary, would you talk about the next several projects that are listed in the general fund in the fire department?
Sure. A couple of things, the fit testing machine and the multi-gas detector are really replacements of equipment that we currently have. And they've just gone past their useful life and it's time to replace them. But I would draw your attention to the AEDs that we're proposing to put on each one of the staff cars. You know, we're out and about around the city all day, practically every day. A lot of times, we're close to calls when calls come in. And it's possible that we could jump a call, be close to it, jump a call for a heart attack victim and, and start cardiac, uh...
Resuscitation.
That's the one. Cardiac resuscitation, good grief. Sooner than the, than the units might get there. And so that's what that, that's what that was about. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that or the other two items. Good grief.
Is Pulse Point costing us any money at all in any respect?
No. And that is a benefit of Kansas City Fire Dispatch.
Okay.
Without that dispatch, we would not have Pulse Point.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other questions about fire, I'll ask Finance Director Shirley Land to explain the item that's listed under interdepartmental.
Our current postage meter is an analog meter. And as of January 1st, the post office will no longer communicate uploads or data to analog meters. So we have to upgrade to a digital meter. And that's why this is in the budget, to get the new digital meter.
I'm surprised the post office is upgrading.
It's, it's odd that they're ahead of us, yeah.
I think I've seen the horses out there in their parking lot.
I wish they'd find a weed eater.
Yeah.
Thank you Shirley. Steve, could you talk about the couple items that are listed under police?
Yes, sir. One of them is pretty straightforward, that's moving radar units. One of the existing units has become non-functional and the cost of repairs is not realistic. So we're looking at replacing that unit and adding one additional moving radar unit to another, one of the police fleet. And when we get that done, then we'll have everything outfitted with moving radar units. So that is pretty straightforward. The second item is the equipment necessary to restore the positions to the police department. And I mentioned it, like Eric said, last week, but we're talking about with the six additional officers, we're going to need six additional handheld radios to the tune of about $6,000 each. Because the radio units like this are now obsolete, they don't make them anymore, so we've got to get the latest and greatest, and it costs more. Body cams for each one of the new officers. Handguns, so we've got the weapons for the new officers. We're going to need to get an additional e-ticket rider because we're going to have a second traffic officer out there on the street part of the time. So we need another e-ticket device. So when you take all of these pieces and put them together, it comes to this price tag of $62,500. And we anticipate this is a one-time event, obviously, because we're restoring the positions, but we didn't necessarily want to take this and try and wrap it into the uniform line or something like that. We figured it needed to have a standalone so you understood what it was all about.
This might normally be the kind of item that we would put in gaming, but when we did put together materials for the voters explaining how we would propose to use the revenue from public safety sales tax if it was approved by voters, one of the things we indicated was that we would use it to do the initial equipping of new officers. So we felt that we should use the public safety sales tax revenue, which goes into the general fund. Alright. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the convention and tourism fund, which begins on page 201. We do have some fairly largish projects funded out of this fund this year. Convention and tourism fund, according to statute, can be used for infrastructure or for tourism, as we might choose to define it, expenses. And we felt that all of these sort of had an intersection between the two. So Sarah, could you describe these projects?
Sir, the first here is wayfinding signage. The wayfinding signage plan that you adopted last year, we had divided up the new signage between this coming budget year and the year following. So next year, we're planning for eight pole-mounted signs and two parking lot kiosk signs. And then we would finish the rest of those in 2019. For Armor Road Complete Street, this is the project that we're currently finishing up. We have our final community workshop on September 27th. So this would be implementation of the recommendations coming out of that plan. This number is really amorphous, so it's because we don't have final recommendations. It's kind of our best stab at what we think improvements will cost. And that would be both engineering, design, and construction, mainly for the transition and commercial areas. We intend the, the recommendations for downtown to be a little more longer term. And then the third is gateway signage. Again, going back to the gateway signage plan that you adopted, we still have the construction of the archway budgeted here. And also, 2018, we had in the budget for children, the sign near the children's fountain. I would also remind you, we have the money encumbered for the signage out at I-35 and Armor Road. We ran into an issue with MODOT, but that money is still encumbered. And we're just trying to work out best way forward on that. So for next year, what we're showing in the budget is archway construction and the sign by the children's fountain.
First of all, this Armor Road Complete Street. I just can't see any way that you're going to be able to bring bicycles in and cars down a two-block area from Fayette to Swift.
Right, that is the more challenging.
More challenging, that's ridiculous.
Because it would require changes to the parking. The recommendation from the plan is going to be to put off any changes there until we've had the time to do a parking management plan and to determine whether we have consensus among, you know, the rest, the community to make those changes. So really, what we're focusing on here in what we're budgeting is for improvements from Fayette East to Ozark.
But the thing about it is, if you can't get them through that two-block area, what's, the money you're spending down here isn't going to make a whole lot of difference.
Well, we would still have people connecting to Swift, but we would be directing them to 21st or to 18th.
Just want to make clear that no decision, I mean, this process is still going on, so no decisions have been made about what, if anything, will actually occur.
This is just what we're anticipating as we finish up the plan, but you'll see all of this in the next couple of months.
And you have an event coming up?
On the 27th.
You want to talk about that?
Well, we'll have flyers for you all next Tuesday. But we're doing a pop-up parklet and demonstration project so that we can present the draft recommendations of the plan to the community and get feedback. And also give people a chance to see some of the things that are being recommended by the plan with the bike lane and parallel parking on the east side of Fayette. So you all get a chance to see what it looks like and provide some feedback before it will then come to you all for adoption.
So on this, on the, I went to some of the meetings on these. So I, what you're proposing is for right now, is like you said, downtown, having bikes go on 21st or 18th, correct? And the downtown area, and then from Fayette to Ozark. That's what this encompasses, the design, the construction, anything, what we may, it's like your best guess of what we may do. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, I mean, also, doesn't mean that we're going to spend this money either. We can get a final plan of what, what we, what's going to do and what it was, what it's going to look like. And then from there, decide what we...
Right, we're not expecting the final plan to be before you until October, November. But we were taking a stab at what we think would be next steps in this budget request.
And then we can decide what we want to spend or how we want to spend it at that time when you got the plan. And you did say that did include in construction costs as well as your guesstimate?
Yes, that includes engineering, design, and construction.
You know, at first, when I started off on this, I, you know, I thought, you know, there's not a lot of bike, I mean, as far as bikes, and is it really worth the money to do it? And I still think about that, but it, I, you know, going around the city and being around during the daytime and on the weekends, a lot of bikes around town. And our bikes, or rental bikes too, have been used pretty good, so at least ought to look into it.
If there are no more questions about the convention and tourism on projects?
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
You know, I realize that the I-35 down here is more traffic there, but I keep thinking that if we add that extra development onto the east, should that signage be moved out further? Have we considered any kind of signage coming in from the east?
Yes, that's part of the plan, is signage out by Chateau, but that's in another year.
Okay.
Alright. Well, we'll move on then to the gaming fund. Starting on page 202 of the budget. So there are a number of items listed under administration, which really are all kind of carry-on items that we do each year. So I don't really have anything much new to add about those. Some of them are sort of contingency items, such as possible unanticipated legal fees, single audit costs, if we have a single audit, we anticipate that we might. And then administrative costs, which we talked about last budget, which we did indicate increases in each of the different funds to, to pay for services that are provided to those funds by the general fund. This is actually a new one, it hadn't been in gaming before. Any questions about administration projects in the gaming fund? Moving on to buildings and grounds in the gaming fund, it's at the bottom of page 202, City Hall facelift. We actually had some funds in this year's budget, which it doesn't look like we're quite ready to expand. We might expand a little bit here before the end of the fiscal year. But this is actually a multi-year project. We had an interdepartmental group, a committee of members who, staff members, who took a look all around the exterior and the interior of City Hall. I think we all get used to how things look, and we tried to look at it with fresh eyes to see if there was anything that really needed some sprucing up, some improvement in appearance. And we did identify a number of items, both on the exterior and the interior. And if you look in the gaming fund, you'd see that we actually have projects listed in the five-year outlook, going out for five years on this. Next year, we have an amount of $55,000, which we're proposing. And the, our, the thought was that next year, it would be a good idea to focus on the bathrooms here in the building, particularly the ones off of the council chambers, which we think are in need of some improvement, just in terms of their overall appearance. And, and also in terms of the bathrooms that are in the administration section of City Hall. So that's what we've, we don't have anything specific planned, but tried to budget an estimated amount to, to do some, some improvement of those areas.
Does this also include the sign out front?
Well, the overall project does, yes, sir. We don't have that showing in next year, but we do, yes, sir, it does. Yes, we do think that that, it's time to, time to change that sign out. Yep. Okay, Pat, could you describe the next item that's listed?
Yes, sir. Replacement of rooftop HVAC units. We have several units that are aging and getting toward the end of their useful life. And we wanted to make a multi-year program of replacing those units, starting this year with a $30,000 installation or replacement of a unit that serves the police dispatchers and the IT room. And in the future, replace the City Hall rooftop units. There's four of them. And there's one very large one at the library. And so in the future, we're going to continue doing this. And then eventually at the police department too. That's the multi-year plan, starting with this year.
If you look in the out-years, so $30,000 for showing next year, but then going forward, $60,000, $60,000, $90,000, and $70,000. So we are talking about a fairly substantial expenditure for HVAC over the five-year period, but we do, Dwayne Mars, ours is our expert, is telling us it's, it's time and that we are starting to spend more and more money on maintenance of our HVAC units. So hopefully, in a good five years, we'll, we'll be in good shape.
We keep hearing this term of useful life. Who determines that?
When we use that phrase, we're often talking about the amount of maintenance that we have to put into something. When it gets, just like when you have a car, that after a while, you're in the shop, you know, every other month, you say, okay, it's time to get rid of this one and buy a new car. That's kind of what we mean when we're talking about useful life of equipment, when it, when it starts to be a maintenance problem. Alright. I'll go ahead and move on to community center. And we have a couple items that we're, you'll see every year in the gaming fund budget. One is the amount necessary to balance the community center budget. So we do have a fund balance in there that we use. So we, we do expect, we've been running deficits with the YMCA. We're, certainly our deficit situation is far, far better than it was before we made the change over to having the YMCA operate in the community center. But we still, for foreseeable future, would expect that there will be deficits. And so when we have a deficit that's not covered by the fund balance in the community center fund, we estimate the amount that will be necessary to transfer over from the gaming fund to balance the fund. And this year, that's $140,738. In addition, we budget every year an amount for equipment repairs that might be necessary. It is our building. And so if there are capital, large capital expenditures over $5,000, according to our agreement with YMCA, then we, they will ask us to take care of that repair. And we have done a number of those over the years. And we expect that that's just a continuing expense that we'll have to have. So we budget $100,000 for that every year. Don't expect that we'll be spending anything like that this fiscal year, but from year to year, you never know.
How come we skipped over the big more?
Well, we're, as I say, we're, we'd be happy to answer questions about that. We, we thought that items that seemed pretty self-explanatory, you know, we're replacing one that we, it's old, we wouldn't necessarily touch on, but if you have a question about it, we'd be happy. That's, that's, and I want to make that clear, we're not, we weren't planning on touching on every single item tonight. But if you see one that we haven't touched on, please ask us about it. Do you have a question about that one?
Yeah, it's not as big as the Bowing One.
No. Like a grasshopper, it's just, they need to be, we have several of them. It's time to replace one of them.
So I'm going to move on to community development within the gaming fund, page 20, bottom of page 203. The first item listed there is Armor Road redevelopment area Burger King property purchase. So in August of last year, the city council approved the sale of the former Hapco site to KC Beaton, owner of the current Burger King in town. And the purchase of the site that's... that's occupied by the current Burger King. We made a partial payment to K.C. Beaton at that time, according to our real estate agreement with them. Do owe an additional amount to them, and the remainder of that amount that we agreed to is budgeted in fiscal year 2018, that's some $1,286,710.
But don't, don't they pay us something for the property that they're buying?
We made that trade-off already, so that's been taken out of the amount. Sarah, could you talk about the next few items?
Once we've acquired the property, we will need to demolish the existing building, and we estimate that to be in the ballpark of $165,000. We are required to clear the property for the developer. And then what we have listed as Phase 2B improvements is somewhat related. We, you know, we have Taney under construction and nearing completion, and we are under contract with Clarkson Construction for Phase 2 for Vernon improvements, but those improvements stop, and we have a gap along Armor Road where the existing Burger King is. We're not able to close down the exit to their drive-through, and we agreed in our settlement agreement that we would not impede their access off of Taney. So once they relocate, we will want to come in and install the median on Taney to extend the rest of the taper for the right turn lane at Vernon in front of their former property. We have a little bit of waterline work, I think that needs to happen there, too. So we've been calling that the Phase 2B project, all of the little details to finish up what would have been part of Phase 2, except that Burger King is right there in the way. So the Phase 2B improvements are expected to be $570,000, and that will pretty much finish up all of the infrastructure that's needed along Armor Road for the redevelopment area. So downtown streetscape.
Question on that?
Sure.
When you were talking about the improvements along Armor Road and the two, Taney and Vernon, what about 16th Avenue? When is that? Is there going to be, there's going to be an exit or entrance off there as well, correct?
Yes. So that is part of our contract with the developer, with the Spine Road contract, which is, we entered into that contract this year, and that those funds have been encumbered. They just recently received their permit from Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the water and sewer improvements, so they should really be getting started here in the next few weeks.
Okay.
But that's already been budgeted.
That's in a past budgeted, that's been encumbered then?
This year.
Okay, all right.
In terms of infrastructure costs, this is the last one that we're showing in this document. We think we'll have largely covered our infrastructure costs for the Armor Road redevelopment area after the completion of this project. I'll just jump in real quick before you get to downtown streetscape, Sarah. I, demolition of Perina Mill, I think you're, yes, sir?
It was three million, now we're four million.
Yes, I did, I did increase it. It's been three million for so long, just in case we, well, we are in the middle of a lawsuit against a previous owner of that Perina Mill site, because we do think that they may have acted improperly in transferring that property before fixing it. We don't know how that'll turn out. But in the event that it doesn't turn out as we'd like to see it turn out, we have budgeted an amount, and because it's been the same amount for several years, I thought, well, we, maybe ought to just, it's an estimate, and, you know, we, I hope, but unfortunately, this is not the kind of project where you can just take a wrecking ball to it or stick a dynamite. It's one that you have to take down piece by piece. So if and when we have to take it down, it'll be an expensive project.
Do we have any kind of a timeline when this is?
You know, the courts, it's wending through the court system now, so I don't know that we do. I think, you know, maybe in a year's time, we might know more about whether the case, we've had legal success or not, but as of right now, I think we're still months out before we'll have any kind of an answer in court. The other item that's a court item is the hillside litigation item. It's an item you've seen year after year. This is a case where we were sued years ago by an owner of property up on the hillside where the water reservoir is, and we would love to finish this case up, but the plaintiff is moving slowly, and so it's just taking its time. Okay, I'll turn it over now to you, Sarah, for that.
Downtown streetscape. So regardless of the outcome from our Armor Road complete street plan, we do still see the need to start thinking about refreshing our downtown streetscape. We have some trees that are reaching the end of their natural life. I mean, you can tell, because when you look at them with all the leaves, you can see some bare limbs up at the top. We have pavers that are starting to be aged and need replacement. So this is to, we've kind of put this project off pending the completion of the Armor Road complete street plan to try to coordinate all of that together, and so this is for us to really get started on what we might need to do to our sidewalks and our streetscape, and to possibly do some tree replacement as well. The zoning ordinance update, we did budget that this year, and we're working on getting that contract to you next week, but in case we don't, Eric's gone ahead and included it in next year's budget. So we need to get started on that to update our ordinance. And then GIS updates. We maintain a geographic information system of data that we use on an ongoing basis in both community development and public works to do mapping and spatial analysis. This project is a two-phase update to the primary shape files that we use as part of that. Next year, we would update our planometrics, so primarily curb and gutter, street center lines, and then we're planning the year after to update a lot of our water data.
Could you explain to me why updating the zoning ordinance costs so much money? Why?
Well, it's a 16-month-long project, so there's, it's a lot of time-intensive work. There's a lot of community outreach that goes into that, to work with property owners on updating those ordinances, and then we have to do legal review. So primarily, it's because...
Where does the money go to, the attorneys?
We did a request for proposals and identified a firm to work with, which is Gould Evans, who's worked with us on planning matters for a good 15 to 20 years, probably. So they employ both urban planners and attorneys on their staff to do this work. But those were the projects I was going to cover. If there's anything else under community development that you have questions about, be happy to answer those.
If not, we'll go ahead and move to FIRE?
Well, wait a minute.
Yes, sir.
This neighborhood revitalization project, residential 353. Are we, are we planning on going forward with that? I mean, is this, okay, we've already done the blight study.
Mm-hmm.
Did you find out whether or not, if this blight study has been done for this, is it good for anybody else that wanted to do a condemnation?
You know, I have not asked Jim Potter to provide me with information about that. I just haven't spoken to him since our work session.
I think we need to find out how.
Yeah. Just to remind you, where we are is council asked us to bring more information to you before you would be willing to indicate if something, if this is something you want to move forward with. That's one of the pieces of information that we would need to get, as well as putting together a more detailed plan of action. So that's where we are. We'll bring that to you when that's ready. You'll tell us if you want to proceed or not. If you say no, then the bulk of this money that's showing in next year's budget would not be spent, but in case you did want to proceed with it, we did want to go ahead and budget for it.
You know, I might suggest, if we decide to maybe even go on and look at this, we ought to call a public meeting and invite, you know, the whole neighborhood to come in and voice their opinion on this, because it affects a lot of people.
Right, we would, we would want to do that, because, one, we would want to make sure that it's put together in such a way that it's useful to residents, but, two, we want them to be aware of it if you're going to adopt this kind of program. So absolutely, that would be part of it, but we don't anticipate doing that until we've had an opportunity to present more information to you and get further feedback.
Just one question on this. It's not in this budget, but on the downtown streetscape. Can I go back to that real quick?
Sure.
Put some money in this year's budget, put a little bit more money in next year's budget, 2019, 2018, 2019, but then like in 2021 and 2022, it's like three-quarters of a million dollars, 750,000. So can you kind of, and I know we're not talking about those budgets yet.
Oh, that's fine, but if you have questions about the out-years, please ask us.
Yes.
So it goes up quite a bit for construction. That's an estimate of what we might spend related to construction to redo the sidewalks in downtown, redo the irrigation system, install new landscaping. Pretty rough estimates, but they're based on talking to Gould Evans and their landscape architects about what a ballpark figure for that might be.
Okay. Thanks.
Do you have any other questions about the community development part of the gaming fund, the projects we had listed there? We'll move on to FIRE, and again, as we were looking at the projects that are listed, it looked like a lot of these are replacement of items that we currently have, or items that you've seen before, so I, we weren't planning on necessarily going through the first five or six items that are listed here, but if you have any questions about any of them, please let us know. Gary, I'll turn it over to you for the items we did talk about presenting to council.
Okay. Yeah, the first two are replacement items, the radio repeaters are an ongoing project carried over for this year. The fire alarm station, stations one and two include replacing the, all of the detectors, and in station two, the fire alarm system is incomplete. It doesn't cover the entire station, and I'm not sure when we installed that, but it's required to cover the entire building, and so we'll be finishing that and covering the rest of the building. Floor scrubbers, you know, we have a lot of activities that go on in the apparatus bays, and so this is an attempt to get the floors actually presentable and clean, as opposed to just moving the dirt around. And then one thing that I would spend a little bit of time talking about is a Knox box. I don't know if you're aware or not, but most of the businesses in the city have Knox boxes, or at least we're getting to most of the businesses. And in that Knox box is, it's a secure box, it can't be opened without a key, and we have the key to those Knox boxes in the fire apparatus. The thing is, is that if something becomes compromised, if we lose one of those keys or something happens, Knox would require us to replace and rekey all of the boxes in the city, because they have now become, the security has now become compromised. So what we're proposing is we would put a secure box in the apparatus where each person would have their own individual PIN, and they would have to enter that PIN to get access to that key. And that key and that information is tracked on the computers so that we could look and see who had the key last and track that key down. We also are using that same technology to secure the narcotics we have on the amulets and the engines, where right now, there's a code to get into the box, but it's a common code that everybody knows. So this same thing would apply. Each person would have their own PIN, and they would be able to get into that box using their own PIN, and we would know who was in that box, when, and what they took out. So it's a, it's a security and a safety measure, and it reduces our liability, and it's just a better way to do business.
Do our apartments have that Knox box on them? Is that the same thing that they use to?
Yes.
Danny gets in there and?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We have more and more businesses putting Knox box on their business, because that way we don't have to break the door down and tear the door up if something's going on inside the building. We just get the key out and open the door. We encourage the, we encourage all the businesses to do that.
A little bit of conversation to have, everybody that wants...
I'm sorry?
We've got a lot of elderly people that maybe can't get to a door, and I know we have suggested that give them your, we give them, you know, our garage door opener number or something like that, but that puts too much liability on you guys, you know?
Right, right.
I wish there was some way we could do that for residents, too.
It's a different day and age.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Any other? Yes, sir.
Question on, I'm going to an outline here, just out of curiosity. Can you tell me Opticom Traffic Control System? I see that in 2000.
Opticom?
For $600,000, so just kind of curious as to what that was.
Yeah, that's a traffic control system where the, each fire truck and police officers, police cars have them as well. Essentially what it is, it's a flashing light that focuses a beam on a receptor that's on the traffic signal, and it turns the traffic light green, the direction the apparatus is running, and turns the opposing traffic red. Yes, sir.
Is that going to highlight on the system that we have now?
Yeah, the system we have now is...
I know it's antiquated.
Yeah, it's very old, and it doesn't really work very well, and...
It was Opticom at one time.
It was Opticom, yes, but it's just...
So we're going to?
Replace it.
Okay.
Yes. At least that's the plan, if council approves it.
Can we get those for our cars, too?
You have to talk to the city administrator about that.
Sure, push it on me, that's gonna...
Thank you, chief. Curious as to what that was, that's great, thank you.
Any other questions about FIRE? All right, we'll move to the interdepartmental section in the middle of page 208. Stephen, would you like to talk about a couple of the items there?
Sure. The one, the first one, the IT supplies, that's basically the operating budget for the IT department in the sense that we don't know what's going to break during the year, and it covers the ability to replace or fix really anything that we take care of, from the network to the PCs, to the phone system, and basically anything. It's kind of a recurring fee that we have every year. ENCODE upgrade is actually a project that was budgeted in the current year, but due to scheduling conflicts with the vendor, we weren't able to get to it. So we rebudget into this year. It's for ENCODE, the main software that runs accounting, court, and utility billing. It's the most widely-used system we have. It was, the version we're on was designed many years ago. I don't think it's been really updated or upgraded in probably a decade, I think. But anyway, this is to move it to their newest system, which is compatible with all current and future systems that we have. The $40,000 there should cover, or will cover, the upgrade installation, all training necessary for that. And the server replacements, the two of my virtual servers, of which I run four, were purchased in 2011, and they just need to be replaced. The technology has surpassed their ability, so with the new sound system that I bought, I actually am saving money on these, because I don't have to spend as much on the server, but I do need to replace two of them to stay current. And that's all that I have. Happy to answer any questions.
The other item that we have listed on the interdepartmental is just the gaming fund's proportional amount of our overall liability insurance bill. Any other questions about the interdepartmental section of this budget? All right, well, moving on to the library on page 209. We talked a bit last week about the carpet. Vicky Lewis, when she was here, talked to you about the condition of the carpet at the library and the reason that she is asking for this expenditure for new carpet with, throughout the building. And I think the other two items that are listed right above that are items that municipal services identified that are necessary for the, just to keep, for the upkeep of the building, gutters and snow rails, and replacement of three exterior doors. Do you have any questions about those?
Are that was being made in North Kansas City, or is any...
I don't know. We haven't bid them out yet. I mean, they, they...
I don't know, I don't know that we've got anybody.
Well, we would, we would tend to bid out the work and probably, you know, unless there was a reason not to, go with the lowest bidder. All right. I'll handle the next few items, a little listed on page 210. One is an amount to balance the communications fund budget. Our agreement with Data Shack does call for the city to share equally with them in any annual operating deficits for the operation of Link City, up to an annual amount of $150,000. We do have some fund balance in the communications fund, so we are tending to be on the conservative side, to budget as if we might lose that entire amount, although so far, the performance of Link City under Data Shack has been a lot better than that. But assuming the maximum, we still think that we would need some $64,000 next year. in order to balance communications fund budget. In Parks and Recreation, so Kelly earlier talked about some projects that are being funded out of the Parks and Recreation Fund, but there are a couple of items in the gaming fund which go, generally speaking, to Parks and Recreation. One is a transfer to that fund in general support. We talked a bit about this a couple of months ago when we talked about the amount that should be transferred to them, that they should pay to the general fund for administrative expenses. An amount is transferred out of the gaming fund to make up for that, as well as an amount that's traditionally been spent, about $55,000 over the, over the years in general support for Parks and Recreation. So that's where that amount of $94,051 comes from. The other item is operating costs for Parks and Recreation Headquarters. So we, the city council did indicate that once the building is up and operating, it wants Parks and Recreation Fund to pay the operating expenses of the new Parks and Recreation Center, so that is in their budget. Until that happens, though, the city has been paying the operating costs while they are still in the library basement. So that is what that $20,000 is for, but once they're in, they will take care of their own operating expenses. Yes, sir.
So on this $20,000, this is from like, this fiscal year, starting in October, October, November, December?
And January.
Maybe January, right?
$5,000 a month.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. And then after that, it's Parks and Rec?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Police Fire Pension Plan. So in 2015, the city council adopted a resolution that approved a defunding policy for the Police and Firefighters Pension Fund, and it says essentially that the city will strive to maintain adequate asset levels in that fund and make contributions as necessary as recommended by the plan's actuary. Fire and Pension Fund has an actuary that they employ, retain, and that whatever the actuary indicates is necessary in order for that fund to be funded at 100% is what the city council has indicated, subject to annual appropriation, that it will do. So in order to make that payment, that the actuary has estimated for the next year of $181,111, we have budgeted that amount in the gaming fund. And they, she adopted, gives us a new multi-year plan every year, and so we just go directly off of that, and so that number can change from year to year. It is showing gradually an increase, but depending upon how the Fire Pension Fund does, could be less than any given year.
We, we just spent a day studying this thing, and there was others, other police, or other, well, police departments that were there, and we're way ahead of a lot of, you know, I mean, we're in really good shape compared to, we're 100%, some of them are down to 70%.
It is, it is relatively unusual for a fund to be funded at 100%. It's great, it's what you all strive for, but we are in the minority, and it's a good place to be. But it does mean that a certain contribution has to come out of city funds in order to keep that fund at that level. All right. Chief, I'll turn it over to you to discuss some of the police capital projects.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to touch on a couple of these items that are somewhat unique, other than the routine replacement things. One of them is the addition of some more cameras around the city to increase our capability to observe different areas of town. One of the, we're looking at actually three cameras. One of them is going to replace the camera that is currently located at the north levee, up at Levy and Howell. That camera is aging and failing. That is a camera that we rely on during flash flooding situations to monitor that levee up there, to make sure we know where the water level's at. So that one is scheduled for replacement. We're also looking at adding two additional cameras, excuse me, three new additional cameras. One of them will be at Armour and Ozark, so we'll have the opportunity to observe that area. The second one will be at Armour and Burlington, so that'll give us some visibility, that'll be mounted on the water plant, so we can get some elevation there, and it'll give us the opportunity to see both Armour and Burlington. And then the third camera that we're looking at potentially placing will be on the building located at 1828 Swift, which is owned by NT Realty, the town square building. You'll remember that the council earlier this year entered into an agreement with NT Realty to use that parking lot. After that agreement was reached, we approached NT and said, would you be interested in allowing the city to place a camera on your building? They were interested in it. The discussions are still continuing, and nothing's been finalized yet. I would anticipate there may need to be some type of a written agreement between the city and NT Realty. We're not there yet, but in hopes of being able to place that camera, which would give us an overlook then, not only to their parking lot, but the bar area along Clay, that would be a good vantage point. And if we can work that out with them, then we'd be adding that camera as well. The other item that I want to touch on is...
Is there a question?
Do we still have the cameras to go back down there on Tany? I mean, is that, I know they're down now, aren't they?
We're, they are supposed to go back up. We're hoping to get an answer soon from the contractor as to when we can anticipate that pole being back in place. But yes, that is, it is part of the plan. It's been reviewed and approved by MoDOT that that pole will go back in place, so we will not only have the cameras down there, but we'll also have the license plate reader system in place on that as well.
Just a question, since the, the current federal government has reversed the former federal government's position on the things that they were giving to police departments and jurisdictions, is there anything besides big-ticket items that we could possibly get via that? We don't need tanks or flamethrowers, but I was wondering if there were smaller things, such as some of this stuff, that we might possibly figure out a way to get?
Our experience in acquiring military equipment has not necessarily been great. Some of the stuff that the military is willing to get rid of is at the end of its useful life, when the military decided to get rid of it. And so when, by the time it comes to us, we've, in years past, we've acquired some things, camouflage netting, some uniforms, what, we got helmets, I think, at one point from them. But...
A boat.
Yeah, a boat, many years ago. But most of it...
Was it a submarine?
It could have been a submarine. I'm not so sure it didn't turn out to be a submarine by the time it was done. But a lot of the military equipment doesn't transition well into our environment. Some of the, I mean, like the armored personnel carriers and things like that, they're not necessar, I mean, the MRAPs, I know a couple of agencies that acquired those, they got them back to their home agencies, drove them down the street, ruined all the asphalt. So...
I think that answered my question pretty well.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, well, I mean, it's a good question, but a lot of that stuff is not really worth having, and not necessarily what...
What you're looking for.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Comment on the cameras, I like, I like the idea of having a camera at Armour and Ozark. That's a, that's a good area to keep an eye on with all the traffic going through there, so, thanks for that, chief.
Well, we are, we are slowly getting to the point that we're going to have the entire Armour Road corridor all the way out to Vernon and a little bit beyond, we'll be able to see virtually all of it from one of the different camera locations.
And that's where you're concentrating on, is more of the high-traffic areas, not necessarily in the avenues, but along the main thoroughfares, Burlington, Armour, stuff like that, right?
And that's correct, and these are used for monitoring traffic flow. If we've got some type of an incident, that, a traffic collision or something like that, it gives the dispatcher's eyes on to that area. If we've got some type of a crime that may be occurring, the officers have the capability to pull the cameras up in their vehicles as well, so it's, it's not designed for low-traffic areas, it's designed for high-traffic, high likelihood of incidents that, where we want to put these things. The other item on the, the fund that I want to touch on is the firing range. We have, our police firing range has been in service since 1995, '96, somewhere along in there, and it's showing its age. What we want to do is the target line, which is the area immediately in front of where the targets are placed. Some of the people who've used that range have not necessarily hit what they were aiming at, and they hit the target line instead. And so it's got some railroad ties on it that are pretty well beat up, two by, it's shot up, let's just leave it at that. And it needs to be replaced. We also want to expand the asphalt pad. Right now, the asphalt pad ends right north and south of where the shooters stand. We want to expand that out a little bit, which will make it easier to collect up the brass after the shooters are done, and help keep that area cleaner. That's what that's all about. And then also repairing the fence around the range. It's had a tree fall on it, there's some damage, so we need to get that taken care of.
Any other questions about police item in the gaming fund? All right, moving on to the public works section at the bottom of 211. We always have an amount in just for general designing and engineering that we don't have a particular project for, but which might come up during the year, just sort of as a contingency amount. Pat, I'll go ahead and cover the next item, but, yeah. I think you're very familiar with our water plant and well rehabilitation project. We've got $14 million showing, you know, on that project before we're done. We're showing $7 million next year and $7 million the next year. I think it'll actually probably end up being allocated pretty differently, although I still expect it's going to cost $14 million to show by the time we're all done. The next item up is design, engineering for the plant. I do expect we'll be bringing that to you next month in October to do the design of the plant, and that will take up, oh, close to 20% of the project budget for that. And then, after that, we will then bid out the first phase of construction, it'll probably take a couple of years, I guess, before we'll have that entire project complete. So probably, although we have $7 million showing in the budget, because we wanted to make sure for the five-year plan that we were showing the entire amount, probably be a lot less next year, could be conceivably more than that the year following. But we are now getting ready to commence that project in earnest.
Those designers must make good money. Maybe we're in the wrong business.
Yeah, we, we had, we just met with them a few days ago and said, well, that's kind of a high percentage of the overall project cost. They'll be here to explain it. I think they've convinced us that this is the kind of project where it's not as simple as just taking something from scratch, which in a way is easier, but in fact, is taking an existing plant and doing a lot of retrofitting and such, and so it's a complicated design project. The other item that we're just showing is just, again, miscellaneous amount for contingency. We can't just use that money at the staff level. If it becomes necessary, we do have to get the mayor's approval and then come to council right after, but we do have an amount, just so that we don't necessarily have to immediately come to the budget amendment if we had some kind of a large emergency which required an immediate expansion.
Is that only for the water deal, or is that for anything?
That's for anything. Yes, sir. Next item up, if you don't have any other questions at this point, is in the Northgate Fund. We're out of the gaming fund now, and moving into other funds. The Northgate Fund, of course, is kind of a special fund for us. We use it to construct Northgate Village, and that is largely built out. We only have one more phase of that that is scheduled, and that's City View Phase Two, in the currently undeveloped area there that's bounded by Swift and Buchanan Streets. The city budgets the entire amount necessary to complete the project, so the developer's indicating that he will be proceeding next year. He has moved that, he's kind of pushed that along year by year, so, but that's what he's indicating to us at this time. And so we do budget the entire amount that would be necessary for us to complete the necessary infrastructure to serve that area, and so that's what that $1,649,000 is. Any questions about Northgate? Once we're completed with that, we will close out this fund. Parks and Recreation, Kelly spoke about earlier. So the next fund up then would be our Transportation Fund, beginning at the top of page 214. Pat, do you want to talk about some of the projects there?
I'll let Sarah talk about downtown sidewalk extension.
We, the block from Armour Road down Fayet to 18th, cross 18th to Howell and back up, has sidewalk along Armour Road, of course, but not any of those other three streets. So what we're showing here is extending sidewalk around that area. This is partially contingent on a private development that we're expecting in that block. If that weren't to materialize, we probably wouldn't spend this money, but it's something that would be important to that development project, so we're hopeful that that's going to materialize, and we'll be putting in some new sidewalk.
Other items that are shown in the Transportation Fund are kind of ones that we bring to you every year, such as curb sidewalk drainage improvements miscellaneous throughout the city, same thing for catch basin replacements. They're also proposing to replace a flatbed dump truck that has over 95,000 miles on it. We also have an annual tree planting and replacement program. Pat, you might want to, if you want, you could touch on that, maybe.
The tree place?
Yeah, the annual tree planting and replacement program.
Yes, it's been extraordinary few years for trees that are dying at the end of their lifecycle, and plus the Emerald Ash Bore, so this has increased, there's subsequently, there's an increase of, for every tree removed, our policy is to replace it. So it's kind of jumped up because of those situations.
What kind of trees are they going to be?
Well, we want to diversify the species in case there's a Dutch elm disease or a Emerald Ash Bore disease, so we're looking at maples this year and lindens, and we really, the tree board is getting together to determine exactly which ones. We have to do that pretty quick, because we, they go in beginning in November, so... But they'll be diversified.
I'll mention the item at the top of page 215, Street State Grant Program. We do have this grant program where we match private expenditures in the commercial and industrial districts to try to beautify the city in the right of way alongside businesses. Some years, we have a lot of takers, some years we don't. This year, I don't think we have very many at all.
$14,000.
Oh, did we? Okay, I hadn't seen that, so, so that's why we, this is an amount, it's a matching grant program, this is the prospective city match. And then just a replacement of a trailer, which is ready for replacement. Any other questions about projects in the Transportation Fund? Okay. Well, Pat, would you like to talk about some projects that are in the Water Fund?
Well, one that's interesting is, we started this year, and that's a valve exercising and repairs project for $50,000. And our valves in emergency situations, we can't, in the past, we can have trouble locating them, or sometimes they're paved over, and then once we locate them and we open them, sometimes we can't shut them back. And so we're doing a proactive approach, and first phase is, this year, we're doing locating, raising them if they're below ground, and then when you, and then exercising them. We have a valve exercise machine, and we're kind of looking for trouble. Because when you exercise it, that's what, how we determine if they're working or not. So we've got money in there, because we know that some of them are not going to shut. Drain, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
All in all, is our, is our water system, our underground water, is it in pretty good shape, or, I mean, are we...
Underground pipes and all? I think they're in average shape, yes. We do have a 2008 master plan, water master plan, that was done by Ernst and McDonald, and it shows about $3.5 million worth of future waterline improvements, replacements, increasing the size in some areas, and that's been put aside, and it's not, it was described as not really needed, but put it on, you know... put it on, you know, in the future, you ought to think about it. It clearly describes what areas and what needs to be done.
They'd be in better shape if they exercised more.
The other one, of course, there's, most of these are just annual allotments in case something goes wrong. Drainage repairs, reservoir roof. Last year, when our contractor finished the project, re-roofing the reservoir roof, a 100-year-old building, soon thereafter, it rained and we noticed that there's a puddle, a big, large puddle up there. And we determined that that really needs to be fixed. So we've worked with the, and if it would have been done right, they would have stopped. If they would have seen the puddle and stopped and got a change order, I would have come to the city because it was unanticipated. So we've worked with the contractor and they've agreed to do it this year after the budget is replenished for $9,500. But this type of work, we added $2,500 in contingency because something could go wrong or some.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So the water, the reservoir roof was completed last year, correct?
Yes.
And so then we found soon after that there was a puddle. Was that in, based on the roof construction, or was it the design? Because I'm thinking, why, why are we paying for it again if the roof wasn't put on correctly? We're, there's water puddling now. Why can't that cost to redo that be passed on to the contractor that put the roof on in the first place?
Well, there's much discussion about that in meetings, and it was pretty much determined that you could not see that there was a low spot. It's a concrete roof, and it was not in the RFP to raise it up. And so back and forth, and, and this $9,500 they're charging us is pretty discounted.
Okay, so it is a discounted price?
Yes, it is.
And it was maybe just a problem then on the, when we planned to put the new roof on, we didn't know probably either that there would be a low spot, but.
And the engineer didn't catch it.
Yeah, we, and we did ask our engineer to look at this and tell us if this was a contractor fault, or if it was an existing condition of the roof. And, and we ended up determining it was an existing condition, and it would have been probably better if the contractor had come to us at that time, had recognized the problem, come to us and said, hey, it's going to cost this much more to get rid of that depression that's there. They didn't, but it would have cost more. So because of that, we have worked with them on a compromise in which, as Pat says, they, they are providing a discounted.
Yeah, as long as they're taking some money off the price, that's, yeah, okay.
Any other questions about water before we get to the last fund that we were going to talk about tonight, which is the Water Pollution Control Fund, WPC?
And one item of note that I think is, I'd like to talk about briefly, is lab renovations. It's been over 25 years since the WPC lab has been renovated, and that was only a partial renovation. It really needs replacing, light fixtures, ceiling tiles, new vinyl flooring, and cabinets and chemical resistant cabinet tops. I think several of you have probably toured that area, and I, I don't think you'd disagree with this project. It's old and rundown, and we want to get, fix it up a little bit.
The dump catcher down there too, is that part of their, who pays the bills on that one, or is that included in the WCP?
I think municipal services, generally speaking, takes care of that building. It's a general fund responsibility. If we had a large project, it would come out of gaming, probably out of, but not out of, not out of water, or, or not out of WPC. This is just in the WPC area for the lab, is what you're talking about, right?
Yes. And I had one more on the list. Again, if there's any that you have questions about that I'm not discussing, let me know. Sewage dump pit, it's page 218, it's $25,000 is the estimate. Right now, the Vector truck that cleans sewers, it's been a practice for many years. What they do is they clean them out, and it's filled, once it's filled, they find a manhole and they dump it all in the manhole. And then it has to go through our entire system. And what other cities do, and what we'd like to do, is build a sewage dump pit at the Bedford Station, at the point of where all of our sewage leaves the city. And it only makes sense. And so that's why we're budgeting for that.
Would there be a smell to that?
Well, not, not really, no.
Because, you know, we got a big revenue source in that area that would, could be offended from such a.
No, generally, there's, there's not a problem. When we put it in manholes, the area doesn't stink. It's a limited volume.
I'm talking about the smell.
Yeah, it's a limited volume of sewage, so generally, I don't think that we could anticipate an odor problem.
Is that down there in the new development where that last pump station is, or is that on and up?
Oh, no, this would be at Bedford, the old sewer plant, the WPC facility. Yes, right there where, that's where it's pumped out, out of town.
Probably for Eric Ampad. For the last, at the last budget meeting, you mentioned underpaying Kansas City, Missouri for some of our sewage. Is there, are we not going to add anything at all to this budget in anticipation of having an issue with that, or is there? Or did I miss that before?
Well, I don't have that showing at the moment. It's not, we wouldn't, I, I wouldn't necessarily have shown it as a capital project, but I would have shown it as, as an operating expense. You know, we do show, if you're looking on page 178, $3,300,000 showing the proposed amount for sewer charge to Kansas City, Missouri. It's very last line item on page 178. And if you, you see it the year, you know, we, we estimate this year, we're going to spend about $2.9 million. That's kind of where that gap is. So in other words, the reason we, instead of, you know, our, our budgeting as much as $3,300,000 rather than closer to what we expect to spend this year is because we do expect that there's going to be a, a gap there that we'll need to make up. But it's, it is possible, though, and I did say it last, last week as well, we may need to bring a sizable budget amendment to you. So, don't have any idea what that amount might be, so haven't budgeted an amount specifically to cover that. Did want to give you a forewarning, though, that, that, that may be a large item that would, would impact the WPC fund. The good news there is WPC fund has a, a pretty good fund balance. We're looking at $2.2 million at the end of, of 2018, so it, it can handle that. But, yeah, to answer your question, no, that's not really specifically budgeted in this year's budget. Thank you.
Are we finished?
Yes, sir. We, you know, we, as I say, we thought we didn't necessarily need to go through every project the way we have in years past, but we, we certainly don't want to foreclose any questions. Do you have any questions about this or any other part of the budget?
I just, can I just add a comment? I do like the five-year capital gain improvements in the gaming fund calendar in the back. I think that really does help really forecast into the future a little bit.
It helps us to think about these things too, to do it in more than a year in advance.
Every year that I sit through these budgets, I gain a deeper respect for the staff that puts these things together and worries about them and gets gray hair and goes out and looks at stuff. It's quite, it's quite a job. I mean, this, there's a lot of money, taxpayer money, and involved here. And I think North Kansas City can be very proud of the people that put this stuff together. This city is as solvent and as secure as any jurisdiction, I think, probably in the, in the state of Missouri. Do we have a, what is it, they say it's the best practices for, if we had no income coming in whatsoever, we have like, what, this is a six-months reserve or something like that? What they used to call that?
So in the general fund, the policy of the city council is a reserve, or what would you call it? Fund balance reserve. 50% in the general fund is our policy, 25% in the other operating funds. Most of those funds were well above that 25%. We're at about 72% in the general fund now. The one fund, as I indicated last, last week, that it's experiencing a little bit of stress that we'll pay, need to pay attention to is transportation fund. We are, where we are getting close to that 25% threshold. But we're in pretty good shape overall in, in most of our funds.
Thank you. You guys are doing a great job.
Well, thank you. I'll just remind you, you talk about a big responsibility. Ultimately, it will be you who will be asking to vote next week on about $45 million worth of expenditures. So we do, there is a lot of money involved in, in what we've been engaged in the last couple of weeks.
You know, when you think about it, we got about what, 4,300 residents? And you take $43 million divided up, that's, that's a lot of money.
We're fortunate to have the gaming fund, which allows us to do some things that we couldn't otherwise do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to thank staff as well, especially you, Eric, and, and our award-winning Shirley as well.
Award-winning Shirley.
Yeah. So, I mean, she's, I mean, you all put together a good budget. I've come to the city council meetings before, I came on the council and different city administrators, and, and this is very concise, very clear to be, it's laid out very easy to understand. I agree with Bryant on the, on the five-year forecast is really good. So, and I appreciate, you know, now with the public safety sales tax, where we're trying to move a lot of stuff out of the gaming fund, the reoccurring, and putting them in the fund balances. Excellent work again.
Thank you.
You already got your base.
Yeah, it's in there. It's in there.
Most, okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You can stay, you can stay. As long as you're here cleaning up the bathroom.
Thank you, thank you.
I do need a hug.
Okay, honey, see you next time.